This afternoon, Ms. Thomas and I felt like it was best to at least give you a chance for y'all to ask questions. We may not be able to answer them, but we'll try to. I've asked the clerk of court Scott Suggs to come. He's gonna talk to you a few minutes about the present condition of the courthouse and what we know about it, and you can ask him any questions you want to about the courthouse. Technically and under the law, the clerk of court is in charge of the courthouse, the space in the courthouse, the assignment of space in the courthouse, and so county council may fund it through the administrator's office, but Mr. Suggs is in charge of the courthouse. So I'm gonna ask Scott Suggs something to come forward.
Well, good evening. Good to see everybody just here. Having some sort of community. I guess the best thing to say is first of all, I've been clerk of court. I was elected first in 1996, took office in January 1997, so this is my 22nd year, and I appreciate the privilege to lead the clerk of court and to serve you. One of the biggest problems with the courthouse is the security issues. It's kind of changed over the years of how mainly like judges and court personnel are protected or isolated from it. Where we're at now is just not possible, the way it's set up. We get judges, our local judges, which is resident judges, which is out the Fourth Circuit, so Donahue, Dale, Chesterfield, Marlborough County, they're kind of used to this setup, and there's a similar where they're at a lot of times, so they're not used to what is available on the newer courthouses that we have judges. The judges travel throughout the whole state, circuit court judges and family court judges, they're assigned throughout the whole state. When we get judges coming from other areas, especially those with newer courthouses, or just those even from Greenville and Spartanburg and Charleston, I mean, their eyes get about this big when they realize the situation that they're in. And it's just kind of a lack of security is the first thing, because of the way it's designed, and back then that was probably functional. I kind of think of it as like when cars were made, didn't even have seat belts, other safety issues, and you know, back when it was built, it was built probably with specifications and the way it was acceptable at the time, it's just we've outgrown that. Times have changed and it's just different. Set up where the judges' chambers is, we have one in, and then the public defender's office is right next door, so we always have to have two sheriff's deputies right outside the judges' chamber, and then even then going down the hall, where you have a probation office where people have already been sentenced that are in the probation office being signed up for probation, or they're not in shackles or anything because they've come probably from bond, out on bond, so they're not restrained in any way. Then as you get further where the inmates are kept right behind the courtroom, female, it's not a place for females, so they have to sit on a bench right outside the back door of the courtroom, and also then when the judge comes by, they escort him into a bathroom and stand there like this, so if by chance somebody decides to run out, they could hopefully stop him. So just that's some of the issues, and then if you've been through courthouse recently, it's just, again, it was a building built, I think, it started in what, 63? So it's probably what we thought we'd still be using it for the facilities that we are now. It's just kind of gotten, there's places in it that's just, if you couldn't look at it, you would just see what I'm saying, is the condition has deteriorated over the years just through normal wear and tear, not from neglect, but just from normal wear and tear. And so that's kind of where we are, and now at most courthouses, they have Sally ports or even underground, or where another elevator is used, where you don't have inmates, like now, right now, you could be coming up there to pay taxes, and they're bringing in 10 inmates from the jail. You've probably seen it if you've been up there before, and they stop you from, they say, "Stand back over here," and they bring the inmates in, put them on the elevator, they ride up. Other times, there's defendants that's out on bond that are riding up down the same elevator that you're riding up and down, which probably you would not say that's, you prefer to do that, but that's the situation that we find ourselves in, where they're not isolated, not able to have separate interests for court personnel, judges, that type of thing. Everybody's coming in through the same way pretty much, but judges do come in through another interest where on the backside where they do, again, stop everybody. They just tell everybody, "Stop where you are," and judges come in real quick, they answer them. Parking now is the same way, most courthouses have it isolated, where judges are parking in different areas on the public, and they do not have access to, it's walled off or fenced off, and they're able to just pull up, come into another interest, and they're not even interacting with the public. That's probably the synopsis of what we're dealing with, but I'd be glad, if I'm capable of answering any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions. Yes, sir?
My concern, well, structure, what is the condition of the building itself? The structural building itself? Is it a structure sound building or a building not structure sound?
That's probably outside of my range of capabilities answering it, but I mean, far as I know personally, I've not heard of any structural problems with it per se, saying, you know, it's about to fall in or anything like that, or damage being done to the building itself, but that man probably answered a lot better than I can.
The corner of the treasurer's office is being held up by pieces of ripoff because it has something down that part. So I told them they ever lost it and looked down and apologized. Other than that, I think it is sound because they said that that would hold for my lifetime and somebody else's too.
Yes, sir.
I don't think there's anybody in town who would argue that we don't, or what you're saying is 100% that we didn't secure, it's way outdated. I think from my perspective is that the question most people want to know is, we're splitting it or splitting it, we would have to, to the, to the, probably 151, or we will build two centers inside if they can, if it's up to see if it's here, or we'll remodel it. My perspective is if we, it needs to be where it is, it needs to be downtown. We have a monster building down there that already consumes the little bit of the square, which was built for a horse and buggy, like I said, for your backs, everything's kind of outgrown. But then if we're gonna build another big building, which I agree that we need to build another big building for the courthouse, and have secure, just like you're saying, it's way outdated, all that needs to be updated, but then if you build that and really this monster building's still sitting there, is it gonna be, how do you kind of, is it better to remodel it, and then still we're looking at having two large facilities downtown that could really consume the whole center of the town?
These, I think we'll have to make this decision. Okay. I'm gonna step in on that question, Curtis.
It's way insecure.
Okay. The county ball about five years ago, what I call the old Thomas Gulf Station, which was the radio shack, which was Harrison's, over here between the library and the old county jail. We cleared it off. That was always anticipated as the place for the new courthouse, okay? We can put a one-story building on that facility and accomplish all the things that we want to do as far as security and updating. The present facility, every time we need to rewire it for computer purposes, it becomes a disaster. The onsite computer storage is kept in a closet on the second floor, okay? It needs to be in a separate facility, it's basically air-conditioned, you know, to take care of computer servers. So the judicial part, I would anticipate, would go on that spot. As to whether the present building can be remodeled, we are waiting for the final word from Michael Baker Engineering. We have a rough draft that I haven't even seen, only Mr. Stewart's seen, because there's some, there's some problems with it. If we can save it, I would anticipate we would try to save it for administrative purposes and use that for the administrative offices of the county. If we can't save it, then it's probably gonna be come down, come down and be leveled, and we're gonna have to look for other spaces in the city of Darlington to house those administrative purposes. There are lots available, LOT, lots available, that we can purchase. We do not own any land outside at the detention center where we could put anything. All of that land was sold several years ago, before I went on county council, and when Mr. Stewart started thinking about putting something out there, he ran into that problem. We don't own it.
That's the county administrator.
Yeah, Mr. Stewart's county administrator, and so we could, you know, if we wanted to, there's no land out there, okay? I don't think that's the anticipation anyway. I think the thing would be, keep everything inside the city limits of Darlington. The courthouse has to be, okay, by law, inside the city limits. This would keep it downtown, people could still go to the same restaurants, it'd just be a block away, and we can secure everything. We would probably take over from the city Hewitt Street, make that a county street instead of a city street, so that we could maintain it, and so we don't have potholes every time I go down Hewitt Street I have to dodge, okay? So that's what I would anticipate, Curtis.
A lot of people are questioning that. Where is it gonna go? And so far as, I agree with the way you're going about getting the money, because my understanding is that if we don't do the penny sales tax, which a lot of people don't understand, is that helps to where these people in this room, we aren't the only ones paying for it.
That's right.
Everybody in Harpsville, anybody that comes in from the racetrack, anybody that comes in, and tourism, so forth, all those people will help pay for it. People vote no, and a lot of people are afraid to vote yes, because they think, you aren't telling us what you're gonna do, and I understand that you can't tell us because you don't really know it. So I'm saying this, from my perspective, is that there needs to be a clear way for the people to know that the best way to vote is yes, because otherwise, everybody sitting in this room that owns property is gonna be the ones paying for whatever you decide to do.
Ms. Thomas? Ms. Joyce Thomas, District 3.
District 3, and I'd just like to interject that. I don't believe we need to put the cart before the horse. First of all, we need to make sure that the referendum pass. We're not here to say where it's gonna be, that's what we would like, some of us would like to do, but still, yes, we need to make sure, and it's like you're saying, positive about it, let others know, be positive about it, because that's what needs to happen first. And from that on, after that happens, then we'll, you know, other things will happen, and you'll know all about what we doing in the meantime, you know, but that's the first thing. We need to get that referendum, yes. And not only that, we were talking about the courthouse, you know, like it's old, like, you know, Mr. Kittle was saying, thick coals and things of that nature, then we always have a problem with parking, see, and all that has to be taken into consideration. So please just be positive, because we know something has to change, and let's make sure that this referendum passes, and tell all the friends of those that are not here, go ahead and, you know, and make that happen, and then you know how things happen in certain series, you go one step and two steps, and just go round up the ladder like that, because we don't know all that, you know, where it's gonna be and all that type of, like Mr. Kittle says, it has to be in the cities, okay? So that's one good thing, all right?
So one of the rumors out there is, they give a rumors, it has passed, somebody said that if y'all found out it was cheaper to renovate the building and keep it than it was, so has that been cleared or not?
We don't have that, we don't even have that in, so that's why.
We do not have that information. That's why I can't give you an honest answer on that. Just like two years ago when we passed another school board referendum, or penny sales tax on the school board, they did not put in their ballot where they were gonna build those three new schools. They just told you they wanted 60-something million dollars to build three new schools. Now they've decided, one school will be built on the Kane property, one's gonna be built out near, right off I-20 near Lamar, and the third one's gonna be somewhere in Lamar, in Harpsville, near, I don't even know. Mr. Campbell, you know where it's gonna be?
It's kind of a problem.
Where's the hospital?
Okay, so until this passes, and it's got to pass before we can do the next step, so that's, there are three options. There's actually four options if you want to. The fourth option is we do absolutely nothing, and we let the Supreme Court of South Carolina tell us we're no longer gonna have court in that building, and they're gonna move us to Florence or Chesterfield, which they can do, and our people would have to go to Florence or Chesterfield to sit on a jury. The third option, well, the first option is this particular penny sales tax, which would go on sales tax for four years, or until it raises $20 million. If it takes only three and a half years to raise that $20 million, then that penny sales tax would stop then. It cannot go longer than four years.
I think that's one thing, not even, I think that's, as it's cursing, talking about rumors, that's something people ask me about. They say, "Well, all they'll do is just keep extending it and use the money for something else, and they'll keep on," but that's not even legal, you can't do that. It'd have to be voted on by the voters again to approve for any other sale.
We got, we would only have authority to raise $20 million. Once we got to that, we'd have to stop. One minute, Curtis, and I'll answer.
That's right.
Oh, you care, I'm sorry. I apologize. The second option is for us to come back to you in two years if this fails, and ask you for $20 million by way of property tax, okay, which would be a bond, a property tax bond. The third way to do it is to bypass the public altogether, like Florence County has done, and build judicial center, and finance it yearly with yearly bonds or tax anticipation money, and go and pay a bond attorney every year to do that until it's paid off. That's how Florence County Council funded the Florence Judicial Center. They bypassed the public. We don't want to bypass the public. We want y'all to be involved in this. We see y'all as a part of this situation.
Three costs a lot more.
Yeah.
Explain why three costs a lot more.
Three would cost substantially more, substantially more. Karen?
Okay, so your projection is the 20 million will only cover your judicial?
No, no, we can do the judicial center, I think, for about 14 or 14.5 million dollars, and the rest would be used for either renovation of the present building or building on some separate new administration building.
Okay, and just guessing, what would you say the penny sales tax average brings in a year?
According to the school district, because we would use the same basis, $5.6 million.
Can you see that?
So you can see we can actually pay it off in less than four years, or raise it in less than four years.
This kind of, this kind of information being given to the public, the voters would know about this.
That's why we're here today.
I know, not gonna get them in here, but if this information being relayed to those that are not coming to the meeting, so they'll be aware that if they vote on this, approximately how much money would be raised every year, and we support the local businesses and off the county. Right. I think it's my understanding, in talking with Charles before, is the county couldn't go out and advertise or say, one way or the other, by using tax dollars, obviously, so that's why the news media is what will get the message out, in one way, shape, or form, because the county couldn't.
Right.
What is the county gonna do? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The county cannot suggest to you that you vote for this. We have to stay neutral, okay? I cannot tell you, Ms. Cohen, please go vote for this. Ms. Cohen, I will tell you the possible options, just like I did, and those are the four options, and so that's what I'm here to do, that's what Ms. Thomas is here to do. Do we think we'd like something? Again, probably so. You can read the lines between the lines, but I can't tell you that according to the law. There's a lady that did that in Somerville and got arrested and was sentenced. Yes, ma'am?
Well, like the gentleman just said, I do think it's possible for the county to put in writing some of this information without advocating a position.
Well, we're in the process of trying to put a news release together, and I've asked somebody to do it, I'm hoping they'll do it. It's better to come from an outside person than from the county.
Why is that?
It just, it's, by going across South Carolina, it seems to have a better effect, okay?
Right, now the ballot, the ballot question is...
It's right here, Ms. Cohen.
Yeah, I see the ballot question, I found it a little difficult to navigate, and I just wondered if you're going to have like a simplified version?
Well, it's as simple as it can be. It's the same language that's used in a school board election two years ago, except transferred to Darlington County, and not 60-something million dollars, but 20 million dollars. If theoretically life became terrible and we didn't raise sales tax to the 5, 20 million dollars, there's a potential you could go against, as you and I discussed on the phone, going against property taxes, but right now you can see that we're already raising 5.6 billion dollars in the sales tax, so that will not occur.
And Ms. Cohen, I can understand what you're saying. It's hard sometimes when you voted to get the just of the referendum. Number one, they're too long. To me, that's my opinion. And the thing about it is the average person don't know what a judicial center is, laypeople, you know, and you have to kind of put yourself sometimes in where they are. But I understand exactly what you're saying, you know, and the word courthouse, and they's not even on that, you know, so I, and that was one thing that bothered me, communication.
Mike, I'll get this one first and come back to you.
Communication, and you know, making it simple, but we have no way of changing what's happening.
Well, I appreciate you having a meeting today.
Yeah, but it's rough sometimes, you know?
Yes, sir.
I've worked in government for 27 years, and this entire project has been confusing as a citizen of this city.
Okay.
So as a layperson, I couldn't even imagine the confusion of the communication. I've attended almost every county council meeting over the past 18 months, and the communication from the council about this project has been very convoluted from meeting to meeting.
Well, you know, I'm not perfect, that's why I'm here today.
No, certainly, and I'm not casting blame. So what I would like to say is that the project, although you are tied, and trust me when I tell you, I believe you when I say, what they can communicate is very difficult at times, and I believe you on that. But as a citizen and also as a, as a government employee, I can also say that there is a lot of things that you can communicate, whether it's through independent people or projects. We've had plenty of time on this, because if we can secure penny tax money, we can also communicate to the citizens in adequate and clear time. So there's different ways we can do this. They are right on the communication piece. So the council and the county administrator have said different things during those meetings that have been very unclear. So we just need to thank you for doing this meeting, because I think it might clear up a lot of things.
I hope so.
And thank you for asking those questions, because it's now time to make this, because if you miss this penny tax money, as you all know, the choices are not right, and the penny tax money is very, very important to me.
Mike?
I'm asking this question thinking about new business, thinking about coming in in Darlington. What is the sales tax rate at the moment, and how does it compare with other counties in the state?
The sales tax rate for non-restaurant purchases is 8%. There are other counties in the state that are charging 9% and 10%. They are doing a penny for roads, they're doing a penny for this, they're doing a penny for that. This would put us at 9% for four years, or till we raise $20 million.
And that's pretty much in line with the other counties?
Yes, sir.
How does it?
I'm gonna go to Brian, then I'll go to you.
I don't wanna put the cart before the horse, and I understand where you're coming from, where you can't make a decision of where it's gonna be until you know that you have the funds to move the project forward. But as a city council representative, my interest is protecting the city of Darlington, and if we have investors who are coming to invest in any of the municipalities within the city or the county of Darlington, and they come to the city of Darlington and our square goes down, then it's not gonna be a good message to the rest of the counties who are trying to recruit as well as us.
Now, I don't think you're gonna have a ghost town.
What I'm getting at is, from an urban development standpoint, bypasses are great things, but they can also be bad for downtowns, and I'm worrying that if we build the administration anywhere but in the heart of the city, then we're forcing traffic to kind of bypass the city again, and just hope that the county council has an interest in, you know, urban development side of the game and making sure we...
I assure you that I do, okay?
Thank you.
And I, you know, I can only speak for myself.
Of course.
Okay, but I've lived in this city since I was adopted in January of 1950, and I continue to love this town. I grew up in this town, went to school in this town. This is my third, or what, fourth term on county council, 24 years difference, in part, one time I was in my 30s and now in my 60s, so it's been an experience. But there's nobody... I love this place, okay? This is a place where my kids, one of them just walked in, could get on their bicycles and could go to Hardee's anytime they wanted to, and I didn't have to worry about it. I still don't think I'd have to have, my grandson would have to worry about it in Darlington, okay? They could go to Caroline Drugstore and they charged ice cream to pop.
You would still do that?
You'd do that.
You would?
Darlington has, still has that small-town flavor to it, okay? And I think certainly the county facilities make a big difference, but I can also see if, if nothing worked out as far as being able to keep that present building, that that square be turned over to the city, and let the city have that square, and turn it into a real park, a real square with gazebos and bandstands like I see when I go up north, because there's pride in the city, okay? First time I ever saw anything like that was in Naperville, Illinois, in 200, excuse me, 1983. That was a railroad community. All they did was hop on the Burlington Northern and go into Chicago, but it was still a small community at the time, and they had all of those kind of, that flair to it, that community flair to it. Darlington has that. No, we don't have Coker College, no, we don't have the governor's school, no, we don't have some NOKA products, but we got each other.
Amen.
And that's the best thing about Darlington, is each other.
The city's a part of the county, so you all just jump in, you know, we all, all the...
Want to ask that question? Yes?
I think the issue, though, is that we agree and believe you 100%, but take you and be on your side, from what he's saying, I understand his side, because you're one of seven, and then what we have to fight against is that, once a little parcel or all that, don't feel the like you can do, so, you know, we have, none of us have control or completely.
I understand. All I can do is tell you what I feel and how I feel, and I'll share my heart with you.
Nobody can make you, when you...
Oh, I know, I understand that, I understand that, but we're working on it. I saw a hand over here.
Yes.
Okay, Lou?
Yes, so I'm not sure that I understood at the beginning of the meeting, are you saying that the, that potential plans, just a sort of a general plans for what these buildings would look like, they have not been made available for anyone to see?
No, 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 no plans have been drawn, okay?
Right.
I'll tell you what I envision, if you want to know what I envision, is I, if you notice the brick on the outside of this building, okay? There are two ladies in this room that made sure that that brick was done, okay? And I love that brick. Mr. Campbell went and found, I think, the most beautiful brick that you could ever do, and I've already told my county administrator, if we build a courthouse, I want that type of brick used. And I've given to Brian Gandy, who's the county historian, a good picture of Monticello, and I said, "You know, it'd be nice to have that courthouse look like Monticello," okay? I want something that looks nice. I do not like these modern, and I'm gonna use this term, Joyce, judicial center, with four-story columns, with atriums that go up and are totally wasted space. It's got, it needs to be functioned. The rooms need to be larger than what they are now. The clerk of court's office is on top of each other. Now, we heard about structure earlier. I'll tell you one thing we found out, that Mr. Clerk told me last week, when he had his leak in the basement from Florence, it was because water was coming through the columns outside, because the concrete had corroded, okay?
Yes, so my point to that was that if taxing folks, you know, I understand the need for it, and I've lived in communities where it's made all the difference in the world, so I know it's important. But it's a little bit like, you know, are you, are you paying for a pickup truck? Are you paying for a sedan? It's kind of not, not understanding what it is, and I absolutely agree with you, Bobby. I think it's so critical that these buildings look like Darlington and not like anywhere in the United States, and what we have there now, I'm sorry, it's ugly. It's just purely ugly. And so, you know, far better.
Yeah.
And I think that would make a difference for a lot of folks, if they had a sense that at least y'all were looking at something that is more like... If they had a sense that at least y'all were looking at something that is more like what the history of the community rather than like.
Yeah, if we was, if we built a one-story, there's absolutely no reason we can't put a dome on it.
Right.
It won't be one you can see up into, but it'll be a dome on the outside, just like Monticello, just like so many places, University of Virginia. I mean, the Thomas Jefferson effect, that's what I'm gonna call it, okay? And so I just see that as, as potential. And I think somebody else at you.
I'm good, I'm good, thanks.
You, you, okay. Other questions?
How old is the present building?
Built nineteen sixty-three.
Do you math? Fifty-five?
Fifty-five years old. This is the way I explain this, and I don't mean to step on anybody's toes. This is the, as I have done some research, this is the last public building built in this state where we had separate bathrooms for blacks and whites. That's why there are four bathroom, bathrooms in the jury room. That's why there are four bathrooms around the outside of the building. We haven't used for bathrooms, Mr. Smith, since when?
Two thousand one, when you quit using them outside.
But they were built simply because one was white and one was colored, okay? The law changed while we're in the process of building that building, that's why you don't see two separate water fountains in there, okay? So does that give you an idea how old this building is? How antiquated this building is? I think it does. It might be my case.
Has anyone listened to this Florence facility?
Let's see, I was like, I was just wondering, you know, a few years, a few years back when y'all was talking about it, county council meeting. And I saw what they was doing, I was wondering whether y'all was gonna be doing the same thing. But then when you start talking about the history, my mind flashed back to the old courthouse that was on the square before that.
Right.
And to me, that, that flashback came back as a type of building that for me would be proud because you're going back and restoring history. But you're gonna have a look back toward what history was like. You know, I'm always just bawling on the outside and, and, uh, you know, I'm going a step further. More than one story, because we always build just to take here today.
Well.
And tomorrow comes, we still trying to squeeze deep, living there, am I right, Clerk?
Yes. Yeah, well, we gotta find, we'll see what the money, Dr. Cohen.
That was in one sense, they thought that I was having a, you know, a building for today and not tomorrow. You gave a figure, twenty million dollars.
Yes.
Uh, actually, if the statistics held correct, we probably raised twenty-two point four million. Approximately, four years. Is twenty million dollars going to be enough to take care of this?
Well, I, I have been told it is. I have been told it is. Now, when the original courthouse committee started working a few years ago, there was discussion of building a forty-million-dollar building. And we had a earthquake in Darlington County, I'll just put it that way. So, uh, that's why we're going with the twenty million dollars. You know, if it, if it goes over that, there's probably ways to fund that without having to go to the people on a short-term kind of note. Again, we've gotta pass this first, then get the engineers to design and architects to design building. Hello, hello, Madam Mayor, how are you? Glad to have you.
The real comment is doing it quite the first time.
Yeah, I understand.
I know it's your comment.
Because, you know, so many times you see, I was kidding, so many times you see people build something, they're building it just for today. Five years down the road, you're right back to what you start doing again. You gotta add another desk in there, cause you gotta add another employee in there. So you pushing people, stacking people up.
Right.
Just to me, if you're gonna do something that's gonna last another fifty-five years or sixty years, do it right. You know, have that extra space that you could utilize on down the road. There was a study done, there was a study done, I don't remember if it was the first committee we had, the second committee or the term, but back fifteen.
Two thousand seven.
Yeah, it's a study done, and they came around and looked at everybody's office and made determinations of the number of people you have today based upon projections of growth and said, today you need X amount of s- space here, but we estimate it's gonna be that. So hopefully, the architects, if, if this is approved, of course, they will take that into consideration in designing, um, what, what's needed. So it's not, not just based on current, who's here now, it's just they had that study.
Who would be going exactly to the judicial?
Well, that'd be, I mean, basically the court functions and clerk of court.
The clerk of court's office, probably probate judge's office, obviously, if you've ever been up there, you send it, he's in a closet for a courtroom. Um, so, um, the probate judge's office would move. Um, and I don't know, at some point, I think it was drawn or talked about bringing in like probation office, sort of where they are, but that's, that starts a whole nother set of problems with people being in there, so.
What we need to do is make sure that we have a court facilities.
For circuit court.
And the clerk of court. After that, everything's extra, so to speak, okay? And the question becomes, does the clerk of court take everything or does he leave part of his, the deed function in a different location? You know, Florence left the deeds in the old building and just took the court function to the new building. And, and all of that's gotta be worked out, okay?
The clerk of court's office is made up of four separate divisions. There's the family court division, circuit court, which is general sessions, and then also civil court, and then registered deeds office. So there's four offices in that one title of clerk of court, it's four separate functions that takes place.
Yes, ma'am, Peggy.
My understanding of all of this discussion, that the judicial part of this courthouse would be put on the property that you said would be already bought.
I'll, yeah.
That would move away from the courthouse. Okay, so that means.
Move from, move away from the square.
From the square, but we're still in town, but we're just away from the courthouse.
Yeah.
Okay, so what is left is just our tax offices and our.
Raptures of affairs and those kind of things.
So then, if they don't decide to refurbish the courthouse, do we have the option of demolishing the courthouse and building that facility back in the history of how the Monticello looked?
Well, I don't know, that depends on what the, the engineer comes in with his recommendation with me, and I haven't seen that yet, okay? I do like to look at the big picture, okay? And if you look at square in Darlington, Marcia, I apologize, don't let me forget. You know, we have a racetrack, it's out there. We have a second racetrack, that's the square, okay? And you notice that on one end, it's, it's kind of wide. It gets narrow on one side, it gets narrow on the other side, and it's really wide over towards the old B.C. Moore's, okay? Well, there's no reason, if we don't need that property anymore, that the city or us, whatever, can't move that square out and narrow some of those roadways and take it and make it maybe a one-lane all the way around square like you find in most southern courthouse cities. And have narrow, and have a much larger square than we have now, which would allow you to do even more, okay? Now, that's a grand vision that I can see, I don't have to close my eyes, I can see it. But if you've been around the second racetrack anytime lately, it's pretty deadly, okay? So, Marcia.
What is, if you get this money, what is the projected timeline of building, roughly?
Probably two thousand and twenty. It'll take that long to get all of, all of stuff done, pre-op and that kind of thing, maybe late two thousand and nineteen. But no, really, you're looking at twenty twenty. Cause nineteen's almost here.
Do you still have a question? I know two more times.
You just answer.
Okay, all right, okay.
As, as Dana said earlier, is there not a way that you or someone can clarify to the layman, to the normal people? Because the, your average worker out there, when they hear that you're gonna raise a penny tax, they, they're dying. But if they spent thirty thousand dollars a year, it's gonna cost for twenty-five dollars a month, okay? And is there not a way that we can express that to them, that if they don't do it this way, that they're gonna?
Everybody in this room is free to welcome, and is welcome to write a letter to the editor, okay? The best way to get this word out is for y'all to go home and write a letter to the editor. And get it published. That'll do more good than anything I can do. All I, all Ms. Thomas and, and, and Scott and I are doing today is giving y'all information. And y'all can go back out and get the word out.
Well, it seems to me like this is a little bit late to be trying to get the word out.
Thank you.
It's two weeks before the election, it's never too late. This is the proper time, if I'd have done it in September, it'd have been forgotten, okay? We got two more.
Three, three weeks in.
Yeah, whatever, you got two more issues, I think, in the news and press before the election, okay? It could be in next weeks, it can't be in today, it's because it went in today, right, Sam? But it could be in next week and it could be in the next week. The same thing with the Heartful Messenger, which comes out twice a week. Yes, ma'am.
So you're telling us that you cannot build this outside of the city limits, am I correct?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
That's been a big issue.
I know it has been. I, I understand that, Marcia. That's why I'm, we wanna have this meeting. This is why I wanted to involve y'all, okay? I've never done a townhouse meeting before. And, and, and my wife left town, but she, she would've been here if she could have, but she's down there with grandchildren. I don't call her one day, somebody's got a birthday, and she, she needs to be there.
Uh, you talking about refitting the square with the traffic?
Yeah.
You know, there was a plan done in like sixty-eight or sixty-four that, you know, took the traffic off one side and all that.
Yeah.
Which would've, if it was done then, it would've been ideal, I don't know.
Yeah, I know, and just the amount of damage worked out. I mean, there's the man who used to work for the highway department, he knows what a problem is. But if you go to most southern cities and see a square, it's not Decatur, Georgia, okay? It still has the old courthouse on the city square, and that square is maybe a lane and a half all the way around, okay? If I go to any Georgia courthouse town, you're gonna see the same kind of thing. There's no reason we can't do the same thing here. And then we put up the wonderful lights like we've got now, and we able to provide things in the city center that we can't provide. Okay? Um, and I just say, I think if you want.
That's another thing.
Okay, hang on.
Is the property that you, county or the city already owns that you are, are looking at with administrative purposes?
Uh, the only thing I think theoretically may be towards Mazzino building, but I don't know, there doesn't know space there, okay?
And that would only be probably if the report comes back that the engineers say you can't refurbish the courthouse where, where it currently sits now.
Yeah.
I can honestly say, I, I think one of the things is, when you, when this question will come up about why aren't there a plan in front of it? And that's not, for me, that's obviously county council would've done that. But it was a time sensitive issue, whereas the committee that was formed that had to write the question, they had to come up with that and be three readings in front of county council, they sent the hoit by, I think, like August first or something?
August fifteenth at noon.
Ah, and they had to go to Columbia before it come back to you, right, or not?
No, just come to me, August fifteenth at noon.
Okay, so it was a time issue about whether, it wasn't, I don't think there was, there's part of trying to be deceptive about what, what building or one building, two buildings are refurbished or not refurbished. It's just, they, they didn't have time to make that decision, get it through theirs and then have three readings of this, and then sent the hoit by that time. And one thing is, if, if it is approved, the best thing that we all can do is show up at these county council meetings and let all, eight of them know what your feelings are about it, not just say, okay, I'm just gonna assume they're gonna do this and assume they're gonna do this. You need to show up at these county county meetings when this is being discussed and voted on and, and let, let them know how you feel about it.
Lou?
So if, if indeed the, uh, the court, uh, the courts get moved to this new location and you end up retaining the existing courthouse building and only administration is left in that, is that going to mean that potentially half of that building is gonna be vacant or what proportion of that building will be vacant?
Plenty of things we could put in there. And the first thing you would do, if we can use that building or if we have to use another building for administrative purposes, since it is not a judicial facility, I don't have to have sheriff's deputies there. So when you go pay your taxes, you don't have to take everything out of your pocket to pay your taxes.
They would put historical commission in there?
No, it's in the county jail.
They can't go in this building?
No, it's, it's, it's locked solid in that, that's fireproof. That's the best building they could be in.
Out of curiosity, uh, the folks who are looking at the existing building, if that was to be used for administrative purposes, are they gonna look at down-the-road costs in terms of it's an older building and you may fix it up to today, but in five years or ten years, will you be coming back to the public saying, this building is past its shelf life?
I would anticipate if we end up using that building, that building would be gutted. And the only thing you'll have is the frame outside, and that frame itself will be wrapped, so it will not look like it used to look, because it has to be earthquake fitted, okay? So it won't even, I mean, yes, it'll be a cube, okay? But it won't look like you see it now.
No, I'm just wondering.
I know, but no, we would anticipate it would be, it would be updated to last twenty-five years, I imagine.
Okay, thank you.
No, there's no reason, uh, Mr. Smith back there can tell you, many a time, we have done things with the county by way of prison labor, okay? We're not gonna bring prison labor in to redo the courthouse, thank you, okay? When I was public defender, they came in and they built walls, built walls for me, and they, they were beautiful walls, and they knew that they did it right. But I'm not about to turn loose on that.
If, if the current courthouse can be used for administrative building, uh, offices, where will you house those employees till it's rehabbed?
We'll have to find places for them, we'll have to move them out, or we'll take one floor at a time and move them around. That's just something logistics we like to work out.
And that came up once, remember, it came, it came up once, uh, at county council meeting. The county had already had offers of places for employees to go. I have one request.
Yes, ma'am.
If we're gonna keep it right there and we're going to fix all these nice things, please put a drive-through window for people to pay taxes.
Yes, ma'am. I, I agree with you. No, and I wanted to buy another building in Darlington that was available to do that, but I couldn't sell them.
That's the way I pay mine, I'm in the building, I pay you a month.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, but tw- I know it's expensive to tear something down. It's also gonna be real expensive to renovate if we do the existing. But twenty million will take care of building, maybe two buildings, tearing this one down or building two buildings and renovating that.
No, we'd only build one building that we're just gonna renovate.
Oh.
See, probably this building is, based upon a survey that had been done, I think, in, um, two thousand and sixteen maybe. Obviously, it's built, and that, back then, asbestos was not considered anything bad evidently, because a lot of the tiles contained it. As long as they're not disturbed, obviously, it's not a problem. But in my understanding, Charles is here, so I hate to speak, but just wanted to hit, hit that conversation. But, um, people would give bids to knock it down, and some of them bids would be like a million and a half dollars if there's no hazardous material. So that's just a worthless bid, because we already know there's hazardous material there, so. And the other one for what, three and a half, to tear it down would have to, so you'd have to pay three and a half just to knock it down.
So, and the other thing that the county is doing proactively now is anytime we're dealing with anything that has asbestos, we're taking it out as we go along. For instance, down in the basement where we had the flood, they're taking up old asbestos tile and replacing it so that eventually, if we get to that point where we're gonna tear their building down, we don't have a bunch of money spent bringing in the guys with the little funky suits, um, getting the asbestos out.
Bobby, if they decide, when you know which way they're gonna do, whether they're gonna refurbish it or they, it's not able to be refurbished, will the people have a vote to demolish it and rebuild there or not?
You gotta trust the county council on that. That's why we're elected.
I, I wonder, have you looked in, can we make it a little more, I mean, gut it, leave it there? But is there any way to make it look less like a cube?
Some meet your designs.
I don't know, I'd put the Darlington Garden Club in charge of it.
If you've got to leave a cube like it is now, you're not gonna accomplish anything far as books for the square.
Well, that's why I said it, and I don't understand the word wrapping, except it will be wrapped with new stuff and it will look.
So then you've got a square instead of arches for you to look at.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think it's wrapped, Alex, it's just a top part of it.
So you did so ugly as.
Perfectly, I know, yes.
Councilman Kilgo, I have a statement from, you know, to which she's working.
Yeah.
Tonight, and she asked me to read this.
That's fine.
Good evening and thank you to Councilman Thomas and as well as Councilman Kilgo for caring enough about the citizens.
caring enough about the citizens of your community to hold this town, this town hall meeting. The concern I have, or she has, that the citizens of Darlington are being asked to hand over twenty million dollars to the council, that has not been able to come up with a definitive plan. Once the referendum has passed, we as a community will no longer have a say on how, where the courthouse will be built. Several quotes from the county administrator have been casted out, so I believe the courthouse will remain as one building and be located in downtown Darlington. Ten, or October first eighteen, Councilwoman Thomas asked about the wording of the referendum and why the term courthouse was not used. Mr. Stewart replied that the other part is based on, the other part is based on if you build one building or two, it could be separated judicial building and separate administrative building, or if you build one, you can use the term courthouse, but if you build two of them, the courthouse would only refer to the courts. If it was, if it was the intent to keep the administrative and judicial sections as one in our downtown, then there should have been no issue with them using the term courthouse. Also, on two nineteen eighteen, when the discussion of having a plan that was to be built before the referendum was placed on the ballot, Mr. Stewart said, quote, "There is one reason for not pigeonholing you into where, what exactly just the money and overall project that leaves council in control for steering the rest as an eight-member body," unquote. Also, during the same meeting, the discussion, the plans for the courthouse, Councilman Brown stated, quote, "What really drives it is the best interest of the county. This is not just the city, the city of Darlington. These statements do not instill confidence or security that the entire courthouse will remain here. I am sure that the two of you have the best interest in Darlington at heart. You are two of eight votes. Thank you very much for the time."
Okay, thank you.
And that also refers, obviously, out of confidence, because she's not here, but she does thank you.
If I had thrown up the referendum, I would have used the term courthouse and not judicial center. I did this press release, you'll notice I did not say judicial center, I said courthouse. I even spit it into two different words, because traditionally courthouse is two words and not one, okay? Now, that makes me ancient, and I'll accept being ancient, but courthouse is supposed to be two words, okay? Courthouse is where courts are held. If we build this building, if we're successful, I would anticipate it'll be named Darlington County Courthouse over there, and the other will be Darlington County Administrative Offices, okay? Granted, I'm one of eight, but I work real hard, and Mr. Campbell could tell you, I will spend the time to do what's necessary, and I know Ms. Thomas would.
And I'd like for her to know, I did, and it still bothers me that the courthouse, that wording is not on there, but of course, you know, we can't determine what goes on to, on the referendum as far as the county council is concerned, because that's gonna be a key factor for people owning, especially the elderly, okay? And you're not gonna take time to read two paragraphs or one paragraph, and Ms. Thomas, Chris Campbell knows that, but I'm still concerned, and when, when I have agents, I still have a problem with it. But you know, sometimes you have problems you can't change, so I have accepted that, but I'm still concerned about that judicial center, of course.
Linda.
Bobby, I, I think I have voted before, and they had referendums, and I know that they have passed something out to you, you know, in your waiting line or outside, and it kind of explains what the referendum is, and perhaps in the explanation, we can say courthouse. And, and, you know, this, what's gone on here tonight has been very clear, um, and so perhaps we could have an explanation of that and say, and, and these are the choices, and this is why we're asking.
Well, that's why, that's why I had this meeting tonight, so if you get the word out, that's why I'm asking y'all, don't hesitate, write letters to the editor, however you feel about it, okay? I can't tell you to write letters to the editor, positive, negative, or anyway, I'm just saying, if you want to get the word out, all of you have a chance to participate in the system, okay? Yes, Diane?
The twenty million dollars, do we know if that would be enough to refurbish, as well as build a judicial center, to refurbish the...
I don't know that, I don't know, but I also know that there are other funds available, we probably could take it to make up the difference.
Okay.
Again, he's not here, so I hate to, yeah, same conversation I had with the administrator, but his rough estimate, based upon, I think, with Jasper, one of those smaller counties that they built, and then the administrator in Florence told him what it cost them to build. What he figured was the size we would need for the judicial would be approximately about twelve million dollars furnished, so you'd have eight million dollars left to do whatever you need to do, based upon that estimate.
And the reason we went with one floor versus two, or just talking about one versus one floor versus two, that'd sound real good on the table, um, is because, once you go to two floors, you then lose space to stairwells and to elevators, and they, I, I'm not an architect, but they take up a lot of space when you've got to have three separate stairwells and three separate elevators. One public, one for the judges, and one for the prisoners, okay? Now, one person pointed out to me earlier today that I need to really emphasize this. In my time as practicing law in Darlington, I can remember it, even in the last fifteen years, two specific instances where the prisoner had been sentenced and was taken downstairs and was taken to the van so he could go back out, and broke loose and had to be captured.
He was convicted of murder, by the way.
Yeah, he convicted of murder, okay? And it took somebody, he went out and headed down towards Mazingo Building, and then he went back behind Harold Timmons', his old place, and finally was caught almost at the Methodist Church, okay? Only because there was an athletic officer who could catch up, okay? Bobby Kilgo could not have caught up, okay? How did he get out? His girlfriend kissed him and gave him a key to handcuffs. So if they don't get to kiss anymore, once they, they clean him, that ended the kissing, okay? And one time, inside the present building, when Judge Chandler had an office down there, not in the Supreme Court side, but on the other end, there was a holding cell on the fourth floor, and one of my clients climbed through this kind of roof and climbed over and dropped down on Judge Chandler for a minute, okay? So, I assure you, the next building won't have tile in the jail cell, okay? Any other questions?
I want to see the state.
Yes, ma'am.
See the state on that, if you're to then offer thousands of space.
Okay.
What's y'all decide when you split it, or what you can do with it?
Okay, we'll keep that in mind. Yeah, anything else? Well, thank you for coming. Don't forget to vote one way or the other on November six.
Six.
And Mr. Campbell will tomorrow or the next day move his absentee ballot box over here, right?
It'll be Thursday, probably.
Okay, yeah, Linda.
Bobby, can you on your Facebook page, or city, state, county's Facebook, somewhere? I don't exactly remember all those four options.
They'll be, I assure you, they will be on Anna DeWitt's Facebook page before I get to sleep tonight. And I also have been recording this so that I could keep up with it. Please sign in so I'll know who is here.
And they, they copies of a ballot style, it might not be your ballot style, but the only difference would be maybe a house member or school board or county council, but this, the ballot style up there is in, in school district one in Darlington, which would be the say right here, um, and this would be the paper ballot that would be mailed to the voter, doesn't look like machine ballot, machine ballots longer, print bigger. Another thing, ladies said back there about explanations, we cannot, the state can do explanations, because they got a committee of a, of their school board, the superintendent, but we cannot do a explanation. They won't let us, they said, no, you can't do explanations, so I could not print an explanation and hand that at the polls, explain it, so, you know, they always write it for attorneys, always, they don't, they don't leave and let somebody, a layman, interject, but, um, but it's, it's simple. I guess, as clear as mud, I reckon, probably.